Pursuant to Section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located in the board meeting room on the north wall. The purpose of this meeting is to receive an update on student transportation. Roll call, please.
Fay.
Here.
Gadding.
Here.
America. Scanlon. Snow.
Here.
Underwood.
Here.
Vargas.
Here.
Wayne. Williams. Six present.
So at this time, I would entertain a motion to excuse Mr. Scanlon and Ms. Williams, who are both attending open houses as part of the magnet open house events scheduled for this evening. Those were previous commitments they had, and Ms. America will be late, so also to excuse her. She had a previous commitment that she needed to, an obligation that she needed to handle. She should be here probably, I would think, within the next half hour. Is there a motion to excuse?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Vargas. So, motion by Ms. Underwood and second from Mr. Vargas. Roll call, please.
Fay.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Six I.
Motion carries. At this time, would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The next item on the agenda is public comment. We have, let me check, Mr. Ray is getting me the rest of the sheets.
We have seven speakers who have submitted requests to speak forms. So I think we will be able to remain within the one-hour time limit. If you need an interpreter, would you please let Mr. Ray know and one will be provided for you? We understand that people sometimes have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about. We ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak and that you refrain from applause of your public, refrain from applause or other outbursts during the presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not mention the student or the staff member by name and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us in looking into those types of specifics for you. As a reminder, we would ask that you please spell your name and state your address before you begin your public comment. It's now 6:06 PM, and our first public speaker is Kelly Clark. Just come right up to the podium, and then what you'll do is you'll state your name, you'll spell your last name, and you'll give us your address. And then you'll have five minutes to speak, and Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute left and when you have 30 seconds left.
Okay. My name's Kelly Clark, C-L-A-R-K. Address is 7966 Bartlett Street. 68122 is the zip. Is that all I needed then?
That's it.
Okay. I'm here because I have two students, two current students. I had a third at one point in time in the OPS school system, and neither one of them have had a bus since day one. My oldest is in high school at North, and my youngest is in elementary at Springfield. I do not have a neighborhood school, so busing is my only option to get these kids to school, and it's just been a concern since day one. I have so many notes here. We started getting buses last week on Tuesday. We had morning and afternoon buses, and then Wednesday, Thursday were fine, and then Friday we had morning buses but no afternoon buses. And then today I had a morning bus and no afternoon bus, and so I was scrambling to pick up kids. And while I have assistance from family members to get these kids to and from school, from Miller, they've got to come, so it's not easy for them either, but I do have that help. Other people do not, and my concern is, you know, what are happening to these kids that their parents work and they can't get their kids home from school? And so I'm just beyond frustrated trying to figure out what I'm going to do. We've been on the news, Fox 42 voiced my husband's opinion, WOWT has been out to our house twice, Action 3 News has been out to our bus stop and interviewed us. I spoke with James Martin Davis last week, and he was looking into it, and then we started having buses come, so I said, "We're good. You don't need to do any more." And now I'm to the point again where we're not having buses, so I don't know if I need to take further action to get something taken care of. I just want somebody to do something, because I'm disabled and this is very hard for me to do. So, that's what I had to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is Teri Patterson.
Hi, my name is Teri Patterson, P-A-T-T-E-R-S-O-N, 7115 Iowa Street, Omaha, 68152. I too have some of the same frustrations that were just stated. I only have one student left in OPS, and my biggest concern has been communication in that we were promised, told by the, through the news media last week, that those students that were affected would receive overnight letters on Wednesday. I've yet to receive a letter, and we still have busing issues yet today. We still didn't get a bus, we didn't get a bus until late last week in the morning. We didn't get an indication of what bus it would be, so we were guessing. I had to stop each driver that came through the neighborhood to ask, you know, "Are you going to North High School?" My student attends North. And I don't have as much a concern, because my student is a sophomore, can pretty much take care of himself, but at the same rate, when I've got a student standing out and my wife and I are trying to go to work, we don't want to leave him stranded or in a situation where he can't get help. Really, I wasn't planning on coming tonight until this afternoon. The bus is number 98. It has the 158 in the window. That's who's picking him up. Had to get that information by calling and waiting on the line to talk to someone. But he goes out to that bus this afternoon, and the bus driver says, "I'm not dropping kids off on this route." What's he supposed to do? He and several other kids went over to the security officer at North and asked, you know, "What are we supposed to do?" And there was no answer. So of course he calls, "Will one of us run by and scoop you up on the way home? But you're going to have to wait." Again, my concern is the communication. All I need to know is, "What do you need me to do? If there's a, if there's a bus, fine. If there's not a bus, tell me there's no bus." But when you promised me that there will be communication of affected students, and at this point, I would have to believe that my student is affected. 158, from what I was told on the line, has no driver. So, we've got a, we've got a route, we've got a bus, but no driver, but no communication directly to us to tell us that you have no driver. So I had to find that out. I've sent an email to, I'm sorry, I'm blocking on his name, to the head of STA. Very polite. I take complaints at work, so I know how it feels to get kind of ripped on when you're doing the best you can. I've yet to receive any response from that email. I'm sure there's probably millions of emails out there. But my issue is communication. Tell us something. If you promise us a communication, and again, if I'm mistaken, if my student is not affected because they have a route but no driver, I'm confused by that. We were told we would get some communication. I didn't receive communication. So I don't know what to do. I don't know what else to do other than to continue to scramble, as the speaker before me said. So that's all I wanted to bring to attention, is communication is the key for me. Tell me what to do, I'll figure out something from there, but I can't do that if I'm guessing. Don't want to send my student out in the morning and tell him, "Wait for the bus. Get up, go wait, let us know what happens." Or have to guess in the afternoon, is he going to make it home safely? We'll just plan on picking him up. And that's really all I have to say. I'm just asking for a little better communication. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jarvis Duncan.
Hello, my name is Jarvis Duncan, 8134 Potter Street. I have two students that attend OPS. The first day of school, they were outside for about 45 or 50 minutes before they came back home to tell me no bus had showed up. I attempted to call the bus company and the school, and I received no information about the busing issues. And the way I feel about it is, school started on a specific date, and I, as a parent, knew the date, and I'm not clear on why OPS or the bus company couldn't contact me to say there wouldn't be a school bus for my two sons. As a parent, I don't want to send my kids out to a bus stop when I don't know if a bus is coming. As a taxpayer, I'm offended that nobody had at least a decency to say, "Hey, there's not going to be a bus for your two sons, and you guys got to get your kids to school the best way you know how." I go to the school to pick my sons up and attempt to talk to the principals and administrators there, and they also had no information regarding the busing issue. I listen to the news, and they say, "Be patient," but I'm trying to be patient as a parent, but I'm not receiving any information about what exactly is going on. I'm pretty upset about the entire situation. I think a lot more could have been done by OPS and the bus company, and that's kind of all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Nokai. Did I get that right? Okay.
My name is Jessica Nokai. That's N as in Nancy, O-C-K-A-I. I'm at 4418 Franklin Street, 68111. I'm here because, mainly because of accountability. Nobody is being held accountable. I, my 12-year-old son, first time riding a bus, goes to Morton, pretty far out, was left over a mile. The bus driver told them, "Well, we're not going to your stop." Left him and his friend over a mile from our home. And he's wandering around by Benson High School, trying to figure out how to get home. I don't know what to do with that. Anything could have happened to my child. I'm talking to the bus company, "Oh, well, sometimes kids get on the wrong bus so they can be with their friends." No. The school, the Panther Pack After School Program, told him, "This is the bus you're taking, because this is the late bus." So he was instructed to get on that bus. And then the bus driver says, "Well, you need to get off my bus, because this is as far as I'm going." No. The, then the school, these are all the stories I've gathered from everybody, and nobody's, nobody is holding anybody accountable for this. I want to know why my son was dropped off. I'm pretty sure if I had done that, I'd have charges on me. Nobody's holding the bus driver accountable. What am I, what am I supposed to worry every day how my kid's going to get home from school? I'm sitting at, at work today thinking, "Okay, it's 3 o'clock. Do I need to call and make sure my kid made it home? What am I supposed to do? I need to know who's accountable. I need to know if there, what's the protocol if a kid gets, so no other kids have gotten on the wrong bus? Or we can just drop them off anywhere? There has to be protocol, and if there's, if there's not a protocol, there needs to be protocol for if a kid gets on the wrong bus? And if there is protocol, somebody needs to contact that driver on Bus 15 on Friday and do something with him? Because I'm pretty sure that I can file charges and I can, I can take this, but you know what? I don't want to do that. I want it to be handled. So for all, if it was any of anybody else's child, if it was your own child wandering around trying to figure out how to get home, I just want everybody, so imagine how that felt for me, hearing that from him. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Gina Miller.
Gina Miller, 4511, North 167th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68116. I don't have any prepared remarks this evening, just a couple things that I wanted to bring up tonight. We're talking about this year's issues and what's been going on this year, but my family has had ongoing, consistent issues with STA. And I've brought that up several different methods, ways, to all the different powers to be. And I think that we often look at these issues from an adult perspective. So, how am I going to get my kids to school? Who's accountable? What's the taxpayers paying? What, how is this affecting, whatever? I'm here to tell you what this does to a kid who doesn't have a bus, to either get them to school or to pick them up from school, and the inconsistency and the fear and the anxiety and how it completely destroys a beginning of a school year. And I think that all of you that love education know how important that first week of school is. And when something like this happens, it's disastrous for the rest of the year and for those anxieties and fears to just accumulate. And for the kids that already have challenges, who may not have been thrilled to go to school in the first place, this compounds that issue extraordinarily. So, I want us to step back and look at how we're also dealing with these children in the school, if we ever get them into the school. We pulled our daughter from the bus services last year because of ongoing, consistent issues that we could not get resolved. And then the second thing that, but she, we hear all the stories. So, the second thing I wanted to bring about is about attendance. As all of you know, it's kind of my little matter that I get pretty passionate about. And so I want to see what the protocol is for these kids that are having attendance issues due to the busing issues, and how each school is addressing that, and that it's being addressed fairly and across the board with all the kids. And then also, because I do do a lot of work in the attendance arena, I've been, we've been to OIS meetings, and we've been to the student-based attendance council meetings, and as of this week, Attendance Awareness Month starts. And so all the messaging about, "If you're not in school, you're never going to be a success in life," and some of the messaging that these people have put out to the schools and to the principals can be very offensive to individuals in my circumstances that either have a busing issue or a kid that's sick on a chronic basis. And so you can exasperate an issue that has nothing to do with a kid and send out messaging that is hoping to be positive to get kids to come to class, but can be internalized extremely negatively. So I would like to have a conversation with your schools and your leaders about, to look at that messaging very, very carefully in light of what we have going on here with the busing issues this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is James Temple.
Good evening. James Temple, 2194 Parker Circle, Omaha, Nebraska, 68110. I come out of concern. I have grandkids in the district. I want from this board information as regard to the contract that this district has with Student America, number one. The public is due access to that, number one. Evidently, whatever the contract or however the contract reads, it is not adequate, else we wouldn't be having the situation that we're having now. And I want the board to address what's being done as regard to eradicating the situation that we have existing now. And also, what does this board perceive as a timeframe before getting a handle on the present situation? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Payton.
My name is Jennifer Payton, P-A-Y-T-O-N. I live at 8328 Reed Street, 68122. We tell our kids all the time, "Plan ahead or you plan to fail." And I think this OPS bus situation is a complete joke. You guys knew the last day of school, when the first day of school would start. So why wasn't there anything done to be more proactive, to plan for this type of situation? My daughter attends Central. She rides Bus 52. We have never seen Bus 52. After calling Student Transportation several times, they decided they were going to merge the route with Bus 128. Bus 128 never came to her stop. Today, when no bus came, I called, and they said they dropped that route completely, Bus 52. So at what point were we going to be notified that over 30 students were not going to have a bus, that they just completely dropped the route and just didn't say anything? Have students standing on the bus stop for 45, 50 minutes? Then it's like, I have to leave work, I have to, you know, try to figure out how my child is going to get to school? But yet we don't get any response, besides, "They're running a little late," or "It's only X amount of students misplaced," when that's a misrepresentation, because there's lots of students misplaced or not having a bus. She did ride the bus home last Wednesday. The security at her school put her on the bus. It's supposed to take her to her designated stop. She called me and said, "The bus driver said it's too many stops," and put all the kids out that were remaining on the bus. She has the iPhone. I asked her to send me her location. She was 13 blocks away from home, and the bus driver just let all the students out. It was like 13 students that they just left on the street. So to me, that's not acceptable. To me, there's not enough communication about what is going on, what is doing to rectify this matter. If there's no buses, just say, "There's no buses." Maybe transfer a different school, maybe set up some other, you know, plan of action. But to me, this should not be that big of a deal. When y'all knew when school started, before school ended the following year.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Melissa Costello.
My name is Melissa Costello, C-O-S-T-E-L-L-O. Address is 2621 North 67th Street, 68104, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here today, I have three kids in OPS. However, I feel sorry for what everybody's going through. I'm not going through this just yet, but they're taking sixth grade out of my child's school right now, so next year she's going to go to a middle school. You get those applications and fill out what schools you want them to go to. Obviously, she would probably be going to one that's bus, because I don't want her walking to the school that's, you know, kind of closer, because she would be walking by herself. We don't have a lot of kids in the neighborhood. I hope this gets resolved before next year, because what, I mean, not every job you have leniency to just, what's going to happen? She's 11 years old, standing on a bus stop? I mean, so then what? She comes home, obviously she's 11. My 11-year-old doesn't have a cellphone. So then what does she do? Not go to school? So then she's going to get an attendance letter? Therefore then, I will have to go to court or get in trouble. I get in trouble for that. Like, are people being held accountable for this? I don't know who is in charge of the buses, but it seems like something else needs to be done. Someone else needs to take control of this, because if I get a call, or if I get my daughter, you know, some kind of device on her iPad where she could text me, do you think my job's going to be okay every day that I have to leave to get her to school, because I chose a school that she's going to be bused to? And like I said, I feel sorry for every, you know, for all these parents, what they're going through. And I, I don't know. Maybe we need someone else running this, you know, excuses. Everybody has an excuse. Everybody does. Let's just be done with the excuses and fix this problem. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we're going to move on to the one information item that we have this evening, which is transportation. And in accordance with Policy 8341, which allows for members of the board to ask the president of the Board of Education to call a special meeting, Ms. Fay, Mr. Snow, Mr. Vargas, and Mr. Wayne requested that we call a special meeting on transportation. So this evening, what we, what is my understanding and what I've asked staff to do is to prepare a timeline of what happened, to share with us information on how we go about planning for transportation, to share what areas we have already worked on. Clearly, some we have to continue to work on. And then I also believe that Student Transportation of America will be speaking as well. So while Mr. Ray is moving things around and making a little noise, I can answer one question that came up, and that was the question on attendance. So the Board of Education heard earlier, and I can't remember, was it this summer, Mr. Ray? The, we added a code called BUS into attendance, so that if someone's bus was late or not there, that that code was used, and then the student would be excused. So to answer the question on that component of it, I just want to assure you that the board did take that matter into consideration this summer. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Evans, as we're getting set up here and I think we're ready to go.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, hopefully, we can bring some clarity to a topic that we heard some passion tonight, and I've certainly heard passion over the last week and a half, and have a great understanding for that, that passion on this topic. As a parent myself, who had kids who took the bus and actually lived through some of this same experience in a different setting, I understand that, and I, I think it's quite appropriate. And I think we all feel awful. I mean, I feel awful and have told many parents that, that I apologize that we're in this spot. And I think you will get some clarity tonight as we hear from STA and the leaders of Student Transportation of America, and I know that's a topic that we heard quite a few commenters about, and I've certainly answered a lot of emails and phone calls in relationship to STA and our relationship as a district with that company. And also, we've got the director of our transportation system here to kind of walk through how we, how we ended up in this spot and how we're going to make sure we get out of it, and two, how we're going to make sure it doesn't happen again, because those are all fair and appropriate comments. And again, as a parent myself, I, I would feel the same way, and did feel the same way, when a similar situation happened to me. It's been quite a few years back. My, my kids are pretty old now, but it doesn't matter. That's, that's your child. And it doesn't matter that this happens to, no matter what the percent of our kids, whether it only impacted 2% of our 52,000 kids or 5%, it doesn't matter. It's still your son or daughter. And that's what matters. And that's what matters to you, and that's what matters to us, and that's why all of us have a great sense of ownership for correcting this and making sure we make it right, so that we're not in this kind of a situation in the future. And so with that, I'd like to start with our director of transportation, Mr. Travis Sellas, and have Travis, I guess we're going to move to the, I see, Mr. Ray, you've moved a table up here, so, so we're going to have all the comments from the table. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ray. Travis, if you wouldn't mind kind of giving us, from your perspective, the background to where we're at today and how we ended up with the driver shortage we have, and some of those thoughts that maybe bring the timeline together, so that the folks in the audience, as well as the folks at home that might be watching or listening. It's been quite a few years back. My, my kids are pretty old now, but it doesn't matter. That's, that's your child. And it doesn't matter that this happens to, no matter what the percent of our kids, whether it only impacted 2% of our 52,000 kids, or 5%, it doesn't matter. It's still your son or daughter. And that's what matters. And that's what matters to you. And that's what matters to us. And that's why all of us have a great sense of ownership for correcting this and making sure we make it right, so that we're not in this kind of a situation in the future. And so with that, I'd like to start with our Director of Transportation, Mr. Travis Salas, and have Travis, I guess we're gonna move to the, I see, Mr. Ray, you've moved a table up here, so, so we're gonna have all the comments from the table. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ray. Travis, if you wouldn't mind, kind of giving us, from your perspective, the background to where we're at today, and how we ended up with the driver shortage we have, and some of those thoughts that maybe bring the timeline together, so that the folks in the audience, as well as the folks at home that might be watching or listening, get, get an idea of, of how we ended up here, because I think, I think they have the, the right to hear all, all the details. So I thank everybody for being here tonight, and I thank our audience for being here, and our school board for being up here tonight. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Travis, and let him kind of walk through some of the details. Thank you, Mr. Salas.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Evans, parents, students, and members of the public. As mentioned, my name is Travis Salas. I am the Director of Student Transportation. I would like to begin by saying to the students that we serve, and to the parents and guardians, that student safety while transporting students to and from our schools is student transportation's number-one priority. In my six years in this position, we have never encountered a situation as disappointing as the one we're here to talk about tonight. We all regret the burden and inconvenience that Student Transportation of America's shortage of bus drivers has placed on families, our students, and schools. However, I can assure you that student transportation, together with other departments within the Omaha Public Schools, and Student Transportation of America, are working around the clock to stabilize routes, so that students are transported to and from school in a timely manner. Tonight, I hope you will bear with me as I try to accomplish two very different objectives. First, I want to provide a timeline that explains how and when we communicated with STA in preparation for the school year. Second, I, along with representatives from STA, would describe what steps have been taken since we have became aware of driver shortage, where we are today, and what is being done to get things back on track. Just to provide you with some background, in 2001, OPS and Miller Public Schools entered into an interlocal agreement for the purposes of jointly contracting student transportation services. The interlocal agreement created the Metropolitan Omaha Educational Consortium, an interlocal transportation association, otherwise known as MOAC. The concept of MOAC was to save money for each district by jointly bidding and contracting for student transportation services for both districts. The most recent student transportation contract was bidded by MOAC in November 2012, and STA was awarded the contract as a low bidder. Student transportation services began on August 15, 2013, and have continued to this date. Under the contract agreement currently in place, MOAC has entered into a agreement with STA to furnish student transportation services to both districts. MOAC then entered into a separate agreement with OPS and Miller for those two districts to use the STA services provided by STA under its contract with MOAC. Under the terms of the respective contracts, both OPS and Miller are obligated to notify STA with a list of preliminary routes prior to August 1 of each school year. While that is our district's formal contractual obligation, I can share with you that we are regularly in contact with STA well prior to that date, and we express to them what our expectations and requirements are for each upcoming school year. During the spring of this year, I spoke with STA Regional Vice President of Operations, David Prince, who is here tonight, and shared with him some of the changes that were likely to occur, given anticipated changes to the middle school walk zone from 2 miles to 1.5 miles, as well as changes resulting from reorganization of 6th grade school assignments. I estimated that OPS will need 22 additional buses over the number of buses required at the start of the 2015-16 school year, and recommended to Mr. Prince that it would probably be in the best interest to recruit 500 drivers before the start of the school year to be safe. Now, for STA staffing and budgeting purposes, historically, we use a prior beginning-of-the-years route count as a baseline for the upcoming school year route count. This has been a common procedure for a number of years, including the years that STA has held the contract. So, last year, we had 457 routes at the beginning of the 2015-16 school year. That would mean 457 routes would be the baseline for the beginning of the 2016-17 school year. By the time we were completed with routing for the start of this school year, we ended up with an actual increase of 19 additional routes. Therefore, that brings us to a total number of 476 routes. Throughout the spring and summer of 2016, OPS Transportation has been working on the transportation routing for approximately 18,000 regular-ed students. As you may imagine, the routing of buses is dependent upon a lot of variables, including school selection. Therefore, we usually don't start having a clear picture until mid to late July. I think it's also important to note that we do not actually know which students will actually ride each bus. We do all our planning based on students who are eligible for transportation. It takes us several weeks into the school year before we know which students actually ride the bus. That is why the number of routes usually decreases as the year progresses. In fact, last year, we ended the year with 419 routes. However, as I said before, we always use a route count at the beginning of the year as our baseline. With that background in mind, on July 19, 2016, OPS provided STA via email the Route Brains for Wilson Focus School. For clarification, Route Brains include the route number, the run description, the school name, the first and last stop, and the start time for each run. Since Wilson Focus begins earlier than the rest of OPS, our practice has been to submit the Route Brains for Wilson Focus to STA before we submit the rest of the schools. Therefore, there were 16 Route Brains submitted to STA for Wilson. The next day, July 20, our router, Rita Hanson, provided me with the total number of routes we would be needing for this school year. 476, an increase of 19 routes over the routes at the start of the 2015-2016 school year. I immediately picked up the phone and called Mr. Prince. I shared with him that we would have 476 routes, and that this was an increase of 19 buses from the 2015-2016 school year. A week later, on July 27, 2016, OPS provided STA via email with the remaining 460 Route Brains for the 2016-2017 school year. Just as a point of clarification, this timeframe is not out of the norm. We transmitted the Route Brains for the 2015-2016 school year on the same day last year, July 27, 2015. One week later, on August 3, OPS staff and STA staff met to discuss several items in anticipation of the upcoming school year. Item number one on the agenda was a number of routes and personnel to cover. We also notified STA at, at that meeting that we were reducing the number of routes from 476 to 471, because five routes with small student counts would be handled by another contractor, as they would transport students on a smaller vehicle. During this meeting, STA was specifically asked to address the route coverage status. Mr. Prince stated that STA was sitting better than they had ever been. During the meeting, STA requested a copy of the routes. The meeting ended with no indication that there were any driver shortages. The next morning, August 4, OPS provided STA via email with a copy of the routes. It was communicated to STA that the routes would continue to change on a daily basis leading up to school. The total number of routes not generally, or changes do not generally happen, because OPS numbers reduce, they constantly reduce. So the total number of routes do not generally change, unless we are reducing it. We do not have issues with the routes increasing. Six days later, on August 10, OPS provided STA via email with updated routes in advance of the STA route selection that was to take place on Friday, August 12, 2016. Early in the morning of August 15, STA contacted me via email, stating that they had hoped to provide me with the assigned driver route information the previous day, but were still working on the numbers. STA indicated that they were going to be short, but did not know how many at this time, as they still had drivers picking routes. At 4:24 PM on August 15, STA contacted me via email, indicating that there was a significant driver shortage. STA indicated that they had approximately 80 unassigned routes and only 15 standby drivers. This was the first communication that I had received indicating the driver shortage. The next day, OPS provided STA via email with the latest version of the routes. As a point of information, this timeframe, again, is not out of the norm. We provided this information for the 2015-2016 school year on August 10, 2015, two days before the start of school. This activity traditionally occurs a day or two before school starts, and generally means that students are being added to existing stops. This process should not have had any major effect on STA drivers, assuming STA had done the appropriate dry runs in keeping with the preliminary routes. So now, at this point, what I'd like to do is just turn and talk about the second side of what happened after October, August 15. So since August 15, to assist STA with the driver shortage, I want to go from there moving forward. On Wednesday, August 17, my team, working with the Office of District Communications, planned successive automated telephone calls to parents, communicating what efforts were being made to rectify the bus situation. Our team also began vetting plans with, which would permit the use of OPS drivers to cover routes. On Thursday, August 18, OPS Student Transportation put into action the following initiatives to assist in stabilizing routes that were affected by the driver shortage. OPS Special Education buses were assigned to cover 38 STA runs. Multiple transportation vendors were contacted for assistance. Chief Transportation was engaged to cover 10 routes beginning Monday, August 22. OPS routers continued to consolidate routes for efficiency. On Friday, August 19, OPS routers continued to consolidate routes, but with the effect of extending student ridership time. Special education buses were again assigned to cover 59 STA runs. In addition, OPS Transportation contacted Human Resources and Operations to identify current OPS employees and other bargaining units who possess bus credentials. On Saturday, August 20, OPS routers continued to consolidate secondary routes of schools that were in close proximity. OPS Transportation contacted the Office of Student Support and the Physical Education Department, so that they could contact high school principals for the utilization of additional vehicles for qualified drivers from outside of the Student Transportation Division. On Sunday, August 21, OPS Transportation continued to consolidate routes based on the recommended criteria available. On Monday, August 22, OPS Transportation reassigned an additional 12 OPS Special Education drivers to cover 12 STA routes. Special education buses were again being assigned to cover 53 STA runs. In addition, parents or guardians of children affected by the routes, consolidations were no, parents, excuse me, parents who were, the parents of students affected by this consolidation, they were notified via US Mail the changes in their student scheduled routes. These changes were also hand-delivered to respective schools to be given directly to each affected student. In addition, several vans were secured from various secondary schools to be utilized in transporting OPS students. On Tuesday, August 23, OPS Special Education buses were again assigned to cover 35 STA runs. On Wednesday, August 24, OPS Special Education buses were again assigned to cover 24 STA runs. On Thursday, August 25, OPS buses, the Special Education buses, were assigned to cover two STA runs. As you can see, based off the initiatives that were put into effect, each day, assisted coverage from OPS drivers has continued to decrease the number of runs. We continue to work and ensure that every student is picked up on time each day. I hope that this week, we will see the problems decrease dramatically. At this time, I would like to turn the microphone over to Mr. Patrick Vaughn, Chief Operating Officer of STA, and Mr. David Prince, who will cover the steps STA has taken to resolve the situation.
Thank you, Mr. Salas. Before I address the timeline for what to expect in the coming days, I just want to take this opportunity to apologize to the moms and dads in the city of Omaha and the administration for the service disruptions that you've experienced during the first eight days of the school year. The points made this evening by the parents and the speakers are unacceptable to them, and I assure you, are unacceptable to us. We take very seriously our responsibility to transport the children in Omaha timely and safely. I want to thank Mr. Salas, his staff, and the administration for working with us on a collaborative basis to resolve the lateness in the routes. I also want to thank our school bus drivers here in Omaha, they've done an incredible job helping us through a very tough time, as well as the management team, working day in and day night, day out, along with OPS routing, to resolve the lateness in the runs. As was pointed out, we experienced a higher-than-usual turn number of drivers not returned from last year. We hired a total of 40 drivers, April through August. Unfortunately, we lost a total of 60. As you might be aware, in the industry, there's a nationwide driver shortage of school bus drivers, and our company is feeling the effects of this here in Omaha in particular. On a positive note, I'm happy to say that our route coverage and service is improving each day. As reported on this past Friday of this past week, the lateness is now confined to 400, to nine routes out of 433. Now, that's nine too many, and I want you to be rest assured, we're gonna work day in, day night, day in, day out, to resolve the remaining issues. This afternoon, we operated 423 routes out of 433. We have also made recommendations to OPS for another 10 routes that could be consolidated without adding any lateness. I've been told that of the 10, we should expect to be approved with six, which will reduce the total number of routes in Omaha to 417. Our mission, our mission is to resolve this situation as quickly as possible. I'm gonna ask our Vice President of Operations, David Prince, to walk through the training schedule, how many we have in training, when to expect them, and just as a, as a reference point, explain what's, what it's encompassed in obtaining a school bus driver license.
The question is, how are we gonna get there? I'm happy to report that we are making significant progress on the recruiting, training, and hiring side. We now have a total of 60. We now have a total of 61 in some phase of training. I want to take a moment first to share a thumbnail sketch of what's entailed on the routing side so that you have a reference point prior to me getting into the specifics. In order to become a qualified and properly credentialed school bus driver in Nebraska, there are a total of 46 hours of classroom and behind-the-wheel as a minimum, four written exams for a commercial's driver's license. Those that successfully complete the exams and instructional material are then given a commercial learner's permit, at which time there is a 14-day waiting period. On the 15th day, a CDL road test is administered by a third-party tester. Upon successful completion of the CDL driving test, another drive test is scheduled with the Department of Motor Vehicles to obtain a school bus permit. After all of that, they are assigned a route. Now, with 61 in training, we have 15 that are ready for the CDL and in the process of taking those exams. Those 15 drivers have been assigned to do ride-alongs or shadow the drivers filling in for routes that they will eventually be assigned. We have 38 in classroom, training with another five that obtained their CDL and awaiting drug testing results. Three have been hired with licenses and are in the process to expeditiously be approved by our safety team for our route assignment. Over the course of the next three weeks, our expectation is to see many of these folks ready to transport students. I am sure that you all can see the focus we have on safety and fully appreciate the importance of doing it right. I assure you that when our folks came out, come out of class, they are well-prepared to transport students safely. Again, to echo Mr. Vaughn, we apologize for the service disruptions experienced through the first eight days of the school year. We will not rest until we have all the lateness out of the remaining nine routes.
Just a couple of footnotes and follow-ups from Mr. Salas's comments. You know, as, as I had mentioned before, Mr. Salas provided ample notice in the spring of the change in walk distance and the fact that additional routes were needed. We aggressively pursued and recruited at that time, successfully hiring 40. We did not predict losing a total of 60. The mechanics of when we learned that is such that we have what's called a route pick, and a route pick happens on August the 12th. We take the, the existing, not the existing routes, the routes that we received, hard copies of routes, post them, wait for them to be selected. We do a lot of hand-holding throughout the summer with respect to the drivers that were employed last year, encouraging folks to return. The one thing we didn't predict, again, is the higher turnover than usual. The challenge in Omaha is a 3.5% unemployment rate. Last year, I believe it was as low as 2.7. The industry-wide, uh, challenge on the recruiting side is, is tough, and I believe it's the toughest here in Omaha. So we're going to continue to work, we're going to, um, expeditiously get the folks through training and make sure that they're licensed and credentialed properly. Uh, on day two of, of our service, we brought in out-of-state trainers from Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, Florida, and Connecticut. They've worked around the clock with the folks in training, getting them into the schedule that Mr. Prince just shared. I'll turn it over to Mr. Salas now for, um, answered questions.
So in closing, our focus now is to assure that our students are transported to their schools and home again safely and on time. After we get past that main focus, that is our primary responsibility right now, the number-one thing on the agenda, once we get past that and that is accomplished, I will meet with STA, we will assess how this problem can be eliminated in future years, put preventative measures in place, and determine how the district will be made whole financially. I can assure you that we will work hard for the district in accomplishing these goals as quickly as possible. That being said, we are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Uh, Mr. Bay, would you put up, so everyone in the audience can see the timeline, I think, I don't know if it's the second attachment, and I know we've got plenty of people here and I know we have lots of questions. I guess I would ask, especially since we had so many parents talk about communication and talk about routes not covered, obviously tomorrow's a school day, what about those routes that we still don't have drivers for, and how are we communicating with parents?
I want to amend that question. Who communicates with parents, OPS or STA? As a part of that answer.
In terms of the, the routes that are not covered, right now, what we did was did a mass, um, robo-call out to everybody because unfortunately, one of the things about routing is, is fluid, is ongoing. So, for example, someone may not have a bus yesterday, they'll have a bus today. Someone who didn't have a bus today, they'll have a bus tomorrow. What we do from OPS's standpoint, as soon as we get the information, um, from STA in terms of who is not riding the bus, any route consolidations, we send out a letter immediately to the parents with the effective start date. That's, that's, uh, the process that we use at this time, Mr. Wayne.
So can you go back and share with us, I guess, part one of that question was, um, what happens tomorrow? Are all routes covered? And then part two is, is there a better, easier way to communicate to parents what buses, is there someplace to post what buses there isn't still a driver for, or which buses we're running way late on so that parents who work and, and shared some of the concerns they had tonight could more readily gain access to that and be able to understand whether they should be waiting at a bus stop for their child or not? So, I know that was two parts. Did that make sense?
Ju- just to speak to the, um, the routes that, uh, STA is, is covering, again, with respect to the consolidations, um, it originally started on, with 471, consolidated 4, consolidated 38, so dropped, uh, to 433, and, um, and the six that, uh, that, you know, have the potential to be reduced later in the week will, will drop, um, that number from 423 to 417. We, we ran today 423 routes. We have 62 in training. Our expectation is, in the next couple of weeks, to get 15 of the 60, um, 63 in training out. Uh, in terms of the, the routes that are being covered, we don't, we don't expect today that, um, Travis would need, I'm sorry, Mr. Salas would need to assist us, uh, tomorrow. However, as, as Mr. Salas said, it's a fluid situation. Uh, he, he, he did subcontract 10 vans, which I think have a capacity of 10 students in each van, so 100 children, uh, covered there. So right now, based upon those numbers, all, all the routes are covered.
Okay, I'll look to board members for questions that they might have right now. Mr. Wayne?
I have a whole lot, because, you know, transportation is an issue that I've been, uh, we, we spend $25 million on busing and we still don't have data to support that it closes the achievement gap. With that being said, uh, since, I'm gonna start off with some financial questions, um, how much does the average bus cost for us, OPS? I know last year we paid, just want to make sure I get this right, last year we paid 26 million, no, we paid 25 million, over, a little bit over 25 million for 2015 to 2016, is that correct?
Yes, in answer to your question, I don't know that specific figures you're hit, in answer to your question, Mr. Wayne, the average cost of a bus is $50,000 a year.
Okay, and I'll come, $50,000, I'll come back to that. I guess the reason why I called for a special board meeting is that this was just a perfect storm, but we've been actually having this busing issue for the last three years. I could actually go to KETV, Omaha World, Herald, and, uh, WOWT, any news outlet, 2014, 15, and you can always see, first of the year, we start off with hiccups. But what I couldn't understand, I still don't understand, and I think we're going to have to dig into some minutia here tonight to figure out the difference between brains and routes, and I guess that we'll start with that, is a brown, brain and a route the same thing?
A brain is a preliminary route. It gives you basic information such as the route number, the school, the first stop, the last stop, what time the first stop is, what time the, the route should end at a particular school. The reason why we send the, the route brains out is to allow the contractor, STA, the ability to know exactly how many routes that they have and what schools that they're going to.
And I'm gonna come back to that because you say on July 27th, we sent brains out, but then again, on August 4th, August 3rd, we send preliminary routes, and you just said they're the same, but we're using two different words.
And the reason being is when you talk about the brains, the brains do not have the actual students' names on it, doesn't give you the left-right turn. The brains do not have that, the actual detailed routes do.
Which leads to my next couple of questions. How is it that we're able to consolidate 38 routes after STA gets the completed routes on August 10th, but we couldn't consolidate those routes before we started school? Because we just said 50,000 a route, a bus, that's about $2 million we just saved through consolidation.
Because during this quick consolidation, we just stabilized the routes. There are some things that we did to stabilize the routes at this time that we do not normally do, things such as extended the ridership time for each student. The normal, the optimal ride time for a student is an hour. We extended that timeframe.
So the routes that we consolidated, how much did we extend, what's the average extend, extended time?
The optimal time is an hour.
No, I said, the routes we consolidated, what is the average time extended? Out of the 38 routes we consolidated, how long do we extended it? Does anybody know that answer?
I can tell you, there's not an average, what I can tell you specifically is, we had maybe one to two routes that got up to an hour and 17 minutes, and the reason being because those were some of the routes that had the outline because of the learning community. Most of the, the routes did not get beyond that hour, but it allowed us.
So if most of our routes didn't go beyond that hour, and in your words, the optimal route is an hour long, we just saved $2 million over two days by consolidating?
No, I didn't finish all the different things that we did, though. There were some other things that we did with that. We also normally do not have, uh, we, we, the secondary schools that are in close proximity, we put those on the same schools. For example, Monroe and Benson, we did some consolidating there. Bryan Junior High and Bryan High School, we did consolidating there. We looked at Morton and Northwest. Those were things that we do not normally look at to stabilize, uh, routes. That was something different. In addition to that, we increased the load count. We looked at, normally when we put kids on the bus, our load count is generally, generally 48 to 50. We went up to 60. Now, why don't we do 60 always? It's because then you start talking about three students to a seat. And I assure you, once we start three to a seat, we will get negative feedback from people because of the, the average size of a student, if you have three to a seat, that gets uncomfortable and you start having kids sliding out the seat.
But, Mr. Salas, last year, we consolidated from 471, 457 to 419.
Right, and the reason why we continuously go down, Mr. Wayne, is because from, it never stops. When we first start routing, we route in ongoing every day. People are canceling their transportation. Again, when I started, I talked about who's eligible for transportation.
Right.
So you may have, if you bear with me, to go with one bus, to make it simplistic for me, if I had one bus, it would be 30 kids on that bus that we route that say they're eligible. But then when you take into account all the kids who maybe this year, mom has decided I'm gonna transport them, or maybe this kid now has his driver's license, all those different things take that bus of 30 maybe down to 15. Once we find that buses at 15, which the, the way we find that out is through STA. You cannot know what the actual ridership is until the school year starts, which makes the beginning of the year difficult. As soon as those first couple of years are over and we get the actual ridership from STA, then we go back and reconsolidate, and that goes on all day.
So, and, and the reason I understand is because Mr. Salas would tell you that I have a group in my area that wants to always go to Springville, and we always look at how we can do eligible and consolidating, and we end up doing private pay, so I'm very familiar with this conversation. But, I also know we don't start, from our conversations, we don't start consolidating based off of actual ridership until late October, November. That is, the eligible riders is where we start to consolidate, which is what we did right here in two days, is we consolidated 38 routes in two days looking off of eligible ridership. So, I guess my question is going to STA right now, and this is the question that I keep getting asked over and over and over. We operate the same contract that Millard operates. Why isn't Millard having the same issues that we have? And let me, let me, let me clarify that question because there's a lot of different factors that could go in. Process-wise, what processes are different that Millard uses, and you can even go bigger than Millard across the United States, that they are using to make sure that our routes, brains, whatever you want to call them, you guys have ahead of time so that this two days of consolidation don't happen during school but before school?
First of all, in terms of identifying, um, what's different between OPS and Millard, first of all, the, obviously, the size of the contract. We have currently 61 routes in, in Millard, uh, and as I pointed out here, we're down to 433. The, the point you're making, you know, is, is a good one in terms of, um, the, the differences. On, on May 24th, the last day of school in Millard, 61 drivers went home. First day of school this school year, 61 drivers returned. We had zero turnover. So the, you know, the, the, the makeup of the employment force there is largely retirees and very little turnover. So, so that was one part of the issue that, uh, wasn't, you know, wasn't an obstacle for us. The, the other opportunity, and again, Mr. Salas pointed it out earlier in terms of a review of the process that, you know, we've, we've discussed after the, you know, the lateness is resolved and the process review will include what we do, you know, in Millard, and that is have access to the routing system and visibility to the routes all year long so we can work, you know, toward efficiently operating in, in, in Omaha.
You don't, you don't have that now?
Uh, we do not. But it's important, it's important to note that, you know, in, in our labor environment that we have, it's critical that we operate the most efficient system possible. The misnomer for contracting in, in school bus companies is that school bus companies make more money running more buses. We make more money running fewer buses more efficiently. And again, with, with Mr. Salas in, in, in prior discussions, the process review after everything is resolved, you know, is, is on the table to understand best practices and possibly how we can improve to avoid this next year.
But according to your numbers, we're essentially running the same routes as we ended last year. We ended with 419, and now we're running 417.
433.
Four.
433, and we identified.
Six more to be consolidated.
Six more to be consolidated.
So we're essentially running the same number of routes?
That, that number, Mr. Wayne, I want to make sure we also put in there, again, when I say stabilize, with that, we still have 12 routes that are being ran by OPS drivers. We also have, um, 10 routes that are being covered by chief. Those are all STA routes. Once they get stabilized, we'll come back to STA. In addition, in regards to the comments about the.
I'm, I'm sorry, you know what, we, this is a meeting held in public, not a public meeting, we have to let our speakers continue. I, I understand, but.
Ma'am, ma'am, this is how we're gonna resolve this issue tonight. Uh, rest assured, we're gonna resolve this issue tonight and have a plan, or, or at least I'm gonna be here all night with them talking and figuring out how to do it. So, so I understand, I understand that. So, so I understand, I understand that. I guess I'm still trying to figure out, if you said there are $50,000 a bus, we threw out in spring 500, and then we ended up with 471, and now we're down to 433. Did we budget? I guess this is to the budget committee or somebody. Do we budget for 500?
No, we did not.
So what did we budget for?
We budgeted for the 457 buses initially. I have that as my baseline. And then after that, when I actually find out a closer number or get my actual route number, then I go back and meet with the budgeting office. But the same conversation that I'll have with STA, I would have with the budget department to kinda talk about some potential preliminary numbers based off of things that I've seen trends. So for example, when I saw, and this was a conversation with STA, when we cut the buses back in 2010 with the middle schools, when we moved the walk distance up to two miles, we knew at that time that was approximately 22 buses that were gone. So now when we did the reverse, from my standpoint, I said that I thought we potentially could get those 22 buses back. So that's where the conversation started with the baseline of 457. Then I was thinking the additional 22. And then just because of what goes on in transportation, the industry standpoint, let's get some more drivers for cushion. That's why I came up with the number 500.
I just got a few more questions for STA. Can you consolidate routes based off of brains?
It, my understanding is the brains doesn't provide student counts. It provides simply the number.
But that's not an issue. And here's why, you operate, and you're one of the largest providers of busing across the country. Is it typical or is it standard for you to have access to the entire route throughout the year so we can continue to provide efficiencies throughout the whole year, even the summer as we're creating new routes, that you have unfettered access to this information?
By and large, we're responsible for the routing in the majority of our districts. In those districts that we're not responsible for, we work with the district and have visibility and access to the system.
Are you responsible for the routing in Millard? Or is it a cold team effort?
Team effort. We have access and we work with Millard every day to identify efficiencies and opportunities.
Okay.
Could I make a, could I make a point back to Mr. Salas? He made a good point, just in terms of the ridership. Until you physically go out and ride the route and run the route, you don't know the enrollment or the population that's gonna get on the bus. And I believe there are a lot of moving parts here in Omaha that makes that swing.
And I agree, but I just can commend you guys for consolidating 38 routes within the parameters of not affecting students. It seems, that's what I'm being told. Keeping the ridership within the optimal hour and saving the district $2 million, which I'm gonna come back to that $2 million because I think we can put that $2 million somewhere now that we know there's extra money out there. My second question, or my last question, will be more around processes. Our letters go out like on July 28th. That's before the consolidation occurs. Because it seems like the consolidation occurs after we get the completed routes. Moving forward, I guess a couple of part question. Will STA have the ability to review and have access to routing information all year round? The second question is, is will we wait for letters to go out so parents and people aren't confused on all the different changes until after we look at consolidation purposes? And then the last question is, last question isn't for you. I guess last question is, is there more efficiencies we can count on in the next 20 to 30 days?
So, in answer to the, in answer to the question. Yes, we can count on more efficiencies. Again, the efficiencies are fluid. They continuously go. It never stops, which is why that number will decrease. I want to discuss the routing piece. Mr. Wayne brought up a very interesting point in terms of the routing process. Per the contract, OPS is responsible for the routing. There are districts that do allow different various sizes, allow the contractor to do the routing themselves. In our contract, OPS does it. Now, one of the reasons why we don't necessarily just give the contractor the routes, if you will, in advance is because they're constantly changing. And one of the things that really pushes the crux of the matter to this is safety. And we run into this, and some of the parents have experienced this. One of the things that happens is when we routed from our department, it's official. The letter goes out. Therefore, if mom calls me and says, where's my student? I can look on the computer and I can see that he's on Route 24. If she's saying he's missing, I am in a position where I can call STA and say, Route 24, where is the status of it? Now, if the contractor at this day, as it's set up, was to do the routing, or they do their own manual piece, I'm in the blind. My entire staff is in the blind. Because even though they may have routed something due to efficient manner, because they're gonna be the first ones who know about the students dropped off. They tell us, it's scheduled for us to meet, or they give us the information after a couple of weeks, they say to us, hey, here are all the students who are no longer riding. When we get that batch, whether it be a day, a week, as much as they give it to us, we make the consolidations or cancellations based off of that. However, if they opt to do their own manual routing, then what happens is they may take that student that's on Route 24 and put them on Route 38. Yes, it may be more efficient. However, when that parent calls me and asks me, where is that child? I can't talk intelligently to the safety of that student because it's unknown to me. So that's why it's always been a push for us to route through us so it's official. The communication goes out officially to each parent.
And I, and I understand and respect that. I have to push back on you and say, well, right now, I'm getting calls from parents whose kids are not safe. So us routing ourselves is not necessarily the answer. And I'm, and I'm not saying that they routed. I said that they have access to the information so they can, you guys can communicate and work through it on a, on a fluid basis. Like, I, you know, at my old job, I worked with contractors and we would pull up on emergency situations that we would have 10, 15 million dollar things that we gotta get fixed right there on a railroad. But giving somebody completed routes that late in the game and having them bid and turn around, the contractor is never gonna know who shows up until the bid day happens. And what I'm trying to say is how do we move that up? Because this is just the perfect storm that happened this year. But the reality is, we've been having these issues for the last three years. And we have to move up the date, or we have to push back school, one or the other, to make sure that they have access and at this consolidation, I mean, we're talking $2 million. We are redoing Wakanda right now for less than that and as a turnaround school. So I am gonna propose to this board, and we got a budget meeting next, next week in order for me to support any budget. We need a line item for one of our lowest performing schools where this $2 million is gonna go. And it needs to be a line item to turn around that school because we just saved $2 million. And we need to show the public that we made a mistake with the budget, but we're gonna use the best that we can do with this money as we found $2 million, and we're gonna make our lowest performing school another turnaround school now that we have the money. I didn't know that we consolidate over 30 routes every year. That's a $2 million savings every year. We should be able to budget and find and move money to our lowest performing schools. I do appreciate STA coming in today and, for lack of a better word, trying to fall on the sword. And I'm not, I understand CDL drivers are hard to find right now. But what I'm trying to figure out is how do we minimize the impact of the things that we can't control? And we can't control the CDL environment. But what we can control is how we route and how we communicate with our parents. And I haven't even talked about the communication. Because I see Mark Snow wanting to jump in, and he'll probably handle that area. But I will come back if I have to. But I think in order to move forward to resolve this, contractor and everybody needs to work together. And if we wanna get technical on a contractor, whether they can or cannot route, then I'll say that we didn't meet the contract deadline by performing preliminary routes August 4th and August 1st. Instead, we provided brains. That's not routes in the industry of transportation, which I do know a little bit about. Brains are something that I never heard of until I came to this meeting. Routes are routes. So I think it's very important that we have open communication between everybody. I think it's very important we move this 2.2 million dollars to help our kids. And I think it's really important that we figure out a communication tonight that needs to go out on whose bus is covered. We can start, I know kids who can start a website in 10 minutes, and we can put it on there and figure out what buses we got covered and what buses we don't. I appreciate everybody coming and answering questions. I'm just really concerned this lack of communication between OPS and the contractor.
Mr. Snow, did you, I'm sorry, did I miss your hand? Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Thank you guys for attending today's meeting. Just wanna talk about communication and then the OPS routes that we're covering, STA's routes. So, Mr. Salas, you spoke about the phone call that went home. Was that on the 17th? Or was that the 16th to the parents? The first initial contact with parents, letting them know that we were short drivers. When was that first contact?
As a, as a parent, it was, I think, the 16th.
It was the 16th. I figured it was like the 16th. And if, what I recall, if I'm correct, was delays. It didn't mention that you might not have a bus at all, correct? What was that, what was that communication to the parents?
It would have been delays.
Delays.
They discussed delays, yes.
So day two, there was a different phone call, correct? Was there another phone call?
There.
I think, I think some parents got another phone call day two. What was day two's conversation?
The specifics, I guess I have to yield to this farmer. Yeah, to tell me the specific communication that went out.
Because I, I feel that there seems like there, there has been a breakdown on our side. Not talking about supplying drivers, but our side on communication. Whether it was coming from your department or coming from communication. Because day one is, there is delays. Day two's, I mean, day one, there possibly could be delays, there will be delays. Day two, there's more delays, it's bigger than we thought. And then day three, I think there was another phone call that went home to parents, which some of my constituents told me that the end of the conversation was, oh, if you can get your kid to school, take your kid to school. And if that was referred to them on day one, they would have missed that. I mean, they would have been able to get their gears in order. So if you guys can just go, if, just for you, for us as a board, in the community, if you could just go down through the entire line of communication from my sake, because I'm hearing different stories from constituents compared from the district.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Snow. This is not all. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. I don't have the communication broken down line by line because I wasn't prepared for that, but I'll try to do my best based on memory. So the first communication that district communication sent out to parents would have.
Second, when were you notified to communicate to the community?
I actually made the recommendation that we ought to send out robocalls based on information that I was getting and based on that first day feedback from principals where they were informing us that they were having late buses in the morning. So my team made the recommendation that we need to give parents some communication to let them know how to prepare for the following school day. So the messages that we sent out that first evening went out in robocall form, and they were to basically let parents know that we were experiencing some delays and late buses based on what I had been communicated. I guess based on what I'd heard, just kinda coming into this, and knowing that we'd had some past experiences with busing delays and difficulties. I was told that this is something that happens every year. It takes a few weeks to kinda work out the kinks. New bus drivers, learning new routes. In some instances, students learning their routes as well. I was also informed that the changes took place in terms of middle school distance being decreased. So we had some new middle schoolers on buses. So kind of as all of this is happening, again, my team made the recommendation that we need to let parents know something in terms of how they should prepare for busing.
Gotcha. So were those robocalls, did they include, was this just a one-way communication, like we're telling somebody an update? Or was there an opportunity for, call this number or include this email for them so they can reciprocate and contact us?
Sure. So the first, well, we had communication through robocall. We also post on our social media account. We have a pretty active engagement out on social media, so we also posted there. And there was a phone number to student transportation.
In the robocall, there was a phone number for them to contact student transportation if the parent had a specific issue?
Yes, and I can't remember if that was the first call or if it was on the call that we made day two.
Okay. And do you know if these first robocalls were, you know, I represent a constituency that tends to be, you know, bilingual, Latino, Hispanic? Were their robocalls also done in both languages?
No, they were not on the first day. I actually do have, well, I did have a secretary in my office who assisted with that, and she actually just left us recently. Because we were trying to get these communications out in a timely fashion, we went with them in all English.
Well, since, I mean, I'll, I don't wanna just use my, just dominate, so I rather, but I have a, I'll let you go ahead, since you're. Because I have more communication. Well, I'll just continue then, if that's what you insist.
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I, thank you for initiating communication. I think this goes back to something I remember Ms. Underwood saying well over a year ago about some sort of communication plan for not just when big things happen, but for, you know, this predates you being with the district. But for whenever we need to get information to the public, to the media, to the board, and to our families, that we have some sort of process and plan that we follow. And it's apparent that we still don't have that. I mean, I don't know how it can be any clearer. We obviously don't have that. Or we would have been prepared in a district where we have, you know, so many languages, different languages spoken, we would have been prepared to have robocalls done in other, at least, in at least Spanish at a minimum. I found as a parent, the most distressing thing about the communication was the message, if you can drive your child to school, you need to do that. That just to me says the district's going, we just can't do it, sorry. And that was that, as a parent, you know, I was thought, that's upsetting, you know? You know, what I heard, Mr. Evans, from people was not passionate about this issue. I heard anxiety. I heard people with, you know, very clear worry and anxiety because they don't know if their children are safe. They don't know if they're going to be able to stay at work or have to leave work, which puts their job in jeopardy. They don't, they don't know, you know, if kids get to school okay or get to home okay. I mean, these are really stressful situations. And that's what I heard in their voice. I did not hear passion. And I think, as you said, there's, it doesn't really matter the percentage. I felt like you were sort of downplaying their concerns a little bit with that because the percentage is clearly higher than it has been. And the level of anxiety these parents is higher than I've ever seen it before over this situation. So it's, I mean, but back to communication, which is what Mr. Snow is talking about. I really am distressed that we did not have a clear communication plan for this situation, for the potential, if this has truly been an issue before, that there wasn't a clear communication plan for this situation or for any, and how we were going to handle it.
With all due respect, Mrs. Faye, our team jumped in to provide assistance when we were made, when we were made aware that this was a challenge. And it was our goal to make sure that our parents had information.
And I commended you for that at the very beginning. And I actually don't think that this is your fault. And I actually don't think that this is your fault. I actually, you know, as a Board of Education, we hold one person accountable for all of this. So I heard a lot about accountability out there and I heard a lot about, we don't really care about finger pointing and blame, we just want someone to fix it. That's what I heard you all say. That's what I said. I went on the, you know, talked to the news media the first week and said...
I'm aware.
Enough finger pointing and blame, we just need to fix it. And as a Board of Education, we hold the superintendent accountable. That's what we do. We have one employee. That's what we do. So, you know, I, I think that this board should demand what we've been asking for, for a couple of years, and that is a communication plan, a template that we follow, so that whether it is a huge issue like this one, or one that's lesser, that we run into all the time, because what did we hear during the strategic planning was communication, 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 that we're ready.
We certainly do have templates that we follow though.
We haven't seen that plan. I haven't seen that plan. And if it, and the fact that I got some of those robocalls and not every board member did, I don't know why that is. Because I got every single one, I went through my voicemail the other day and deleted at least five. So I don't know why everybody's not getting them. I, you know, I don't know if it's just because I'm a parent. If that's the case, then that's again, a failure of communication, so that we're not all getting them. So that's, that's my expectation at a minimum. We'll come out of this with a clear plan. Mr. Snow.
I completely agree with you. We do need a plan, an SOP standard procedure for things like this that the community would know as well as the board. Obviously, to me, the perception seems like you weren't brought in, and that's just my take on it, on the full scale of the situation. So we're backtracking trying to make up with communication. One of my things for, for parent communication, so that was the third day, right? So...
Friday would have been the third day.
Friday was the third day. So what was the next phase of communication? So we're fixing some of the routes, so i.e., for an example, there's a parent out there, they're hearing that some kids are getting routes, some kids aren't getting routes. What was the communication to those folks that weren't getting routes? And what were the communications to the parents that were getting routes? But it was a 45-minute delay, that that bus was coming, but you were going to get that bus.
Right. It's a great question. And the final communication that my team sent to parents actually went out on Monday. By Monday, we were actually able to work with IT and drill down to just families who actually do use the busing system. We were getting emails in, we were getting calls in, people didn't want to get robocalls, they were going out to 15,000, 52,000 families because we didn't have a list that we had access to to be able to only just communicate with parents who were impacted. So we were working with the best we had available. Once we did get a list that allowed us to drill down, we did a communication on Monday out to families and basically let them know that OPS Student Transportation was working very diligently with STA to try and remedy the issues that we are seeing and then that they should expect to still potentially experience some delays through the week.
But there was no communication, if I wasn't receiving a bus, that I would get a phone call saying, Mark Snow, you don't have a bus.
Right. We didn't have a way to make those communications. They would have had to come through STA. We didn't even, our team doesn't have access to that, that level of detailed information.
On the flip side, if I'm a parent and my child doesn't have a bus, who do I contact?
You would contact student transportation or student, I'm sorry, student transportation or STA.
So who's the, who's, who should be the first contact? If I'm a parent, I have two numbers. What's the number I'm supposed to call?
That final communication we sent out had three numbers in it. It had a number to OPS Student Transportation, it had two additional numbers to specific bus numbers for parents to go to the proper STA phone number for parents to call if they had questions.
The north or south.
Just as a follow-up to that, but what is, who is the primary point of communication? It sounds like there's STA, there's our transportation. Who does a parent call first? Like who is the, who is ultimately responsible for that main point of communication?
If you're calling to inquire where your bus is or try to find out the estimated time of arrival of your bus, then you would call STA either their north-based location or the south-based location. If you have a concern or a complaint or something in regards to trying to find out your eligibility, eligibility standpoint, then you would call OPS Transportation.
Mr. Salas, what you said earlier makes, kind of contradicts what you just said because you told me that people call you and you can pinpoint where that kid is on the bus, right? So who...
Because that would be considered an emergency situation. The example I said, if a kid was missing and someone would call, that's not a call...
Is that, is that communicated to parents? Is the, do not call this number unless it's an emergency?
Well, it says complaints or concerns OPS. But still, again, if someone's child is missing, their initial call is going to go to that base because it's, north base is assigned to certain buses. So your first point of reference is going to be calling the base where your student's bus is assigned to.
Okay, following up with that. So who was communicating with STA on how to communicate with these families? Was anybody in OPS TAC facilitating, facilitating that conversation? Or were we just giving it to STA to just pick up the phone call for 9,000 families?
No, in terms of the...
Communicating, if 9,000, how many kids were affected that first day? Roughly, 9,000?
It was just less than 3,000. It's 2,000 and so...
9,000 arrives at, so 3,000 kids that are affected. Did we give STA talking points or did we let STA know, this is how you're going to communicate with families, this is going to be a large search of phone calls? Or did we just let STA handle those phone calls?
Well, actually, we were getting, communicating with STA. They were telling us which routes. Initially, I would not know which buses that they're not covering. I don't know initially if their driver doesn't show up or if it's affected. I have to wait to get that information from them. Once we get that information, then we do help on our side, we're answering the phones, dealing with the parent calls and whatnot. But the initial standpoint on any given day, if there is a bus that does not pick up a family, or if a bus does not make it to a stop, the first point of contact we get from that would be from STA. It comes to us first from STA.
It comes to, from STA to you saying that there won't be a bus for that.
Correct.
How soon, I had, I had a lot of families, and this is another question that might go to STA, that wouldn't get a route or were picked up late, or one day they got picked up and the next day the bus, for some reason, wasn't there. When they make that formal complaint, how do you resolve that issue? What do you tell those, what was the line of communication you gave those families? Because I personally feel that there, there really wasn't any communication given to those families, that when they called you, they were, weren't given, getting anything out of it. And then they called OPS and from what it seems like, if he was waiting on your information, he didn't know, or their department didn't know what to say. What, what is your line of communication for issues like that? And how fast can you get that? Or if, I mean, if people are talking about emergencies, because I personally believe if my child is at a bus stop for 45 minutes and I'm at work and they're texting me saying, I'm still waiting for the bus, that's an emergency to me.
Yes. We realized that we were running short of drivers and we were not covering all of our routes. And anytime someone called, if someone called and said that the bus didn't show up, we have drivers that went out to pick up students, door to door. Whenever we got a call, we would send someone out. And that's the way it's been since we've, since we've had the shorter start of school. If we ever get any calls about a student not being picked up, if it's the parent calling, regardless of what time it is, if it's 45 minutes late. The thing with us is that we have a lot of buses that finish their secondary school in the morning and have some time in between when they start their elementary routes. So we do have buses that kind of sit on standby, awaiting any calls that we may receive from somebody not getting picked up, and we'll send the buses back to get the students to school.
And the reason why I bring this up is because, I can give an exact example. I had a mother, she called, they said your bus was going to be late. She called again, they was like, all right, your bus is going to be 45 minutes late, it's coming. And she called again and they said, you don't have a bus. We don't have a driver for you. So to me, that doesn't seem like an effective way of communication. I don't know who was in charge or who was reading that or in that map number or what bus wasn't covered. But I think if you're going to tell somebody that you're going to wait, if you're telling me that I have to wait two hours for a bus, you might as well just tell me that I'm not going to get a bus.
Right.
But if you tell someone that you're going to get a bus and that bus doesn't show up, then who's responsible for that, right? Because you've given me the confidence or the faith that my child's going to be picked up and now they're not. To me, I think that's a communication thing that I think you guys, in my opinion, really need to work on and as well as OPS, really need to work on that. If I pull up that map or that phone, that page and I have one number to call, don't give me three numbers to call. I want one number that I can call. And if we do have an issue, we have people on standby to pick up that. And I don't know how many people in OPS staff that we had on, set aside to pick up those phone calls, but to answer that and then also in fact, have the schools prepared to know what to say when a parent comes up and says, my son's not getting a bus, what do I do? So the principal doesn't have to say, well, I don't know, call TAC. I mean, that, that leaves that parent hopeless. And I feel that in the way that I think this still rely, falls on OPS's shoulders because we're responsible for getting that communication out. I don't feel comfortable having STA deliver that communication for us if it's supposed to come from us.
Mr. Snow, we have to be held responsible for that. OPS has worked with us, but we have to be held responsible for that. If someone from one of our offices tells a parent that a bus is coming back to pick up the student and it doesn't come back, we have to be held responsible. We can't hold OPS responsible for that. Whenever we find out something like that is going on, that's a reflection of us as an office. So we have to be held responsible. After hearing all of the complaints from some of the parents, we have some soul searching to go back and do. We have some things we have to do. We have to repair our reputation. The first day of school, we didn't have buses picking up. We're getting better. I think Mr. Vaughn has talked about how we're getting better. We're not going to stop until we get it right. And if one person is coming in complaining or one family is coming in complaining, then we haven't done our job. So before we leave this evening, I will personally get the information for each of the parents that complain. And sometimes there's a lack of understanding in a sense that there's a difference between a late bus and activity bus, where they pick up, where they drop off. Sometimes it's a matter of us communicating as well. So I don't want to sit here and say OPS was responsible for that communication. If we're telling somebody that we're going to send the bus back, that's our fault if we don't send in a bus back and we should be held accountable for it.
Okay. So my last question about parent communication is, so of those nine, I think, how many routes that we don't have fulfilled right now or don't, is it nine? Or how many routes are...
The nine unassigned, but we are, we are able to...
Have we reached out to all those families that do not have routes?
I, I think, whoops, I think that was the first question we asked. You said you have them covered though, correctly?
That's correct. We do have them covered.
Are they, are they covered? Explain what covered means. That'd be better.
That's the question we always have. The route is covered, but it's not running at the scheduled time of the regular pickup if, if the route was being covered by a assigned driver. So if the route pickup time is 6:45, the route could be picked up at 6:55, 6:57, it wouldn't be picked up at the regular time because there's not an assigned driver. So what we do is we have additional drivers after they finish their run in the morning. They try to go back or if they pick up most of their students before their arrival time at school, if they have an opportunity to help out or assist in any way, they go in and help out just to kind of alleviate some of the pressure until we can pull more of the people out of our training.
But parents don't know, those parents still don't know whether or not that bus is coming tomorrow.
That is correct.
And so we've sent the message in some of our communication, obviously we're trying to be reactive, that they, they do, they try to do what they can, take their kids to school. So if they've been taking their kids to school the last few days, why would they believe that the bus is going to be there that day? They have no expectation it's going to be there. We haven't communicated that. Am I correct?
That is correct. And unfortunately, in some instances, we don't have the access to be able to communicate directly with the parent. And that's where we are going to work hand in hand with OPS. As we identify the routes, they identify the students and they can send out the communication. So it's a collaborative effort. They have the information, we have the information as far as which routes. So we have to work on this together as far as giving them the information which routes will not be covered, which students will be affected, and then the communication can go out on that end.
All right. So then it's to Mr. Salas, what is, then what is our timeline for doing that? Because this cycle is, it, it concerns me. This means that a parent may not, you know, they're taking their kids to school tomorrow, they don't believe the route's going to happen, maybe they don't believe for two, three days it's not going to happen. And then we make a decision on our part that, well, they don't need that route anymore because they just choose to take their child to school. We haven't reached out to them. So what's our timeline for reaching out to those unassigned routes that we still have from right now?
Well, in terms of the unassigned routes, again, STA has communicated to OPS that those routes are covered. That's the communication piece I get. And I think that's what's a little different for me. If I call and I ask, are we covered? And I'm told that the, the routes are covered, then it's my expectation that a bus will be there to pick up the parents. Now, when I find out, the first time I'm going to find out is when the parents start calling to let me know that bus has not made it there, even though that's been communicated. And then we go back and have the conversation. What is, what does happen though is, from a school standpoint, one of the things that we do have is a, a mechanism called bus bulletin. So what STA has the ability to do is send out a text to the school, to their designated staff to let them know the status of a bus that may not be there and how they're covering that bus. That's sent out to the schools from STA directly to try to give the schools a heads up immediately. So that is, they're getting it straight from the STA staff right to the school to say, this particular bus may not be riding today, here's our replacement bus in place of it. And we try to get that out or that goes out in the morning and it goes out in the afternoon.
With all due respect, I, I still don't know if a parent right now that was on an unassigned route knows if that bus is coming tomorrow. It, it's coming and I appreciate you telling me it's coming. And if they're watching this, that's fantastic. If they're not watching this, how do they know it's coming? Oh, non-sol, but I mean, recording.
And again, I have to check with STA to find out which is unassigned, because as of right now, I've been told everything is covered.
No, that's, yeah, okay.
Can I ask a question on that? I don't mean to...
I think you might ask my question.
Okay. So I guess to me, and having been a former operations person, it seems as though if we know what routes we're covering, but we don't have a driver for that route, and so it's, it's somewhere in between. And I have plenty of those kids who waited and weren't sure if they were getting picked up. So I, I've gotten all those phone calls too. It seems that if we know what those route numbers are, it would be pretty easy to tell Travis, Mr. Salas, who could then communicate that to Ms. Farmer and somehow we could place a call to those parents so that they would know that tomorrow morning you will have a bus, but it will be potentially 45 minutes late. Because I think from my own children's perspective over the years, if the bus isn't there within 15 minutes, I'm pretty much assuming that my child either missed the bus, didn't get there in time, or that something tragic happened to the bus driver or the bus and I need to take my child to school. Because for me, I don't want to leave my child waiting and not knowing. So I guess, I, I'm just wondering, how can we, how can you all communicate to us in really clear terms of what buses we don't have and whether we start sending out a blast email at night that says, these nine buses, we don't have coverage for yet or, but somehow communicating directly with those families? Because that, there's probably not a whole lot of, I mean, granted, it's 400 to 500 calls, but somehow it seems as though it'd be, it's really important for the safety of our children that we get that information over to Ms. Farmer so that she can narrow in on which students it actually applies to and which families it actually impacts. And I guess the other thing that, that bothered me, and I've had this experience and it wasn't with STA, it was with first students, so I, I get the experience where all of a sudden you get a call from your child and they say, oh, we all got dropped off in the Target parking lot and the bus driver said this is all the further the bus can go. And so you panic and you think, what are you doing in the Target parking lot? And you go get your child. But tonight, we heard a couple of examples from parents whose children maybe were riding late buses, but it doesn't sound like the bus driver maybe clearly communicated to the student either. This isn't, your regular stop is not going to be a stop, so that they could have called... So that they could've called. Somehow there needed to be communication. Kids are kids and they just make assumptions about how life is gonna be because that's how kids are. And then all of a sudden, they discover, "Oh, I'm not going home to my stop." Somehow that needs to be communicated, almost like when you get on a bus at the airport where they say, "This is the exit. Are you gonna get off?" Someone needs to be communicating to the kids on those late buses what the expectation is for where they're gonna be dropped off so that they can contact the parent and say, "This is where I'm at and the bus for late doesn't drop me off at my regular stop. Please come and get me." So that that parent doesn't have that fear of the unknown when they find out after the fact. So I guess those are two things that I heard tonight that, as a parent, resonated with me, as a school board member, impacted me significantly because I care about the safety of our students. I think there's a lot of things we can do communication plan-wise and we clearly, I know that I've talked to Mr. Evans and we'll be having Ms. Farmer give us an update, and I'm sure there's additional work that we can still do on that component of it. That's the big picture. But today, today we have to focus on the safety of our kids and how, as Mr. Vargas said, we're gonna communicate directly with families that maybe are a little confused about what's happening. And especially if we're picking up in the morning, but we're not picking up at the end of the day. If I send my child in the morning and they have a bus, I kind of automatically assume they'll have one at the end of the day. So it's probably, again, that secondary route coverage, but not necessarily an assigned driver. So I know I kind of said a lot on that, but...
If I can just, if I can just say, that communication breakdown is unacceptable. And, you know, we need to communicate with OPS, you know, in the morning, in the afternoon, if there are any routes that aren't gonna be covered. As of, you know, this moment, as I pointed out, in terms of the route coverage, we have 423 that ran today. And I believe Mr. Salas has 10 vans covering the other, the other children for the total of 433. But back to the point on dropping students off at Target, you know, department stores and making them walk a mile, unacceptable, will not be tolerated. You know, our employees care about the kids just as everyone, as much as everyone in this room. We will speak to the folks and make sure that they understand that, you know, that behavior isn't acceptable. We will not take shortcuts and we will commit to improve on the communication side.
So I know you said that you'll stay here, so I know we're not done yet, but I wanna make sure that any parent who has a specific concern can come in, get in a line and share those concerns with you before you leave here this evening so that we know that whoever came has that opportunity. I mean, I realize there's probably other people out there who didn't come, but hopefully we'll get a bunch of these route data to you that we're having concerns about.
Mr. Prince requested our operations staff to make themselves available in the back of the room to speak with the parents. We'll be there as well. And we'll make sure we take, you know, copious notes and address each of the issues and work with Mr. Salas and our folks at the terminal to get things rectified.
Great. Okay. Ms. Underwood.
So I'll try to make this quick because I know our parents are probably ready to start having conversations. So help me understand, just, you know, even though I won't be on the board next year, but just understanding for going into next year and for the future board to feel comfortable knowing we're not gonna encounter this issue again. Help me understand the timeframe for the assigned drivers. It looked like we only had, you know, less than a 24, or 48-hour notice before school started as far as understanding that we had a shortage in drivers. So could you, and I'm not sure if it's STA or OPS staff, but could one of you guys help, help me understand how that kinda works and what the timeframes are in contracts and things like that?
It's not unusual. Just in terms of the time period, our route pick day was on August 12th. At the route pick, we immediately, you know, were able to recognize that, you know, a number of drivers didn't return. So on August 13th, we started making phone calls. We thought you were coming back. No, I found full-time employment or, you know, I have a medical issue or, you know, some issue that caused them not to return. And on that Monday, you know, we alerted OPS that we were gonna be short and, you know, school started that Wednesday. So that's the timeline. It's a compressed timeline. Having said that, it's not unusual. It's not unusual in terms of turnover. This year was unusual to the extent of the higher-than-normal turnover. For some reason, in terms of returning, you know, it would be wonderful to know last day of school in June or May, I'm sorry, that they weren't returning. But, you know, the nature of the industry is that, you know, whether it's a fear of discontinuation of unemployment or finding, you know, a full-time position in July and they're not returning in August, it is, you know, extremely challenging. So that's the timeline that we learned, you know, of that. And then we want to work with OPS to find opportunities to consolidate routes.
And so is there any way to move up that route pick, August 12th timeframe?
Route pick is predicated on when we receive the routes. So the earlier we receive the routes, the earlier we can post, the earlier we'll know what our numbers look like, who plans on coming back. There's one more factor that needs to be factored in there is that sometimes people will pick routes but decide not to come drive with us. And sometimes we don't get that information until the day of. So we're kind of at a disadvantage in some respects because people can choose a route and decide not to drive, but they don't communicate that information. I think what we're talking about here, we keep hearing and hearing over and over, is communication, one way or the other. But route pick for us, if it's moved up earlier, it allows us to kind of get sort of a view of who will be coming back or who has a higher probability of coming back based on the fact that they picked a route.
So I would agree. And I guess the reason I'm focusing on that date, I would agree that there was a communication breakdown for sure. But I think, I don't think we want to rely on a perfect communication plan so that we can be reactionary every year and be okay with it. I think we need to be proactive and have a great communication plan in place in case it does happen again, but assume it's not gonna happen to get, and, you know, proceed with maybe a better process in the first place. So I don't know what that means. I don't know if we can move our routing up any further, Travis, or what, but, you know, maybe it's worth at least looking at, you know, what are the implications of moving that route pick up earlier in the year?
Right now, we start routing in mid-April. We start routing the regular education students. The end of April to the end of May, we're routing to special ed and regular education students for summer school along with the upcoming year. And so then when you go into June, we're just getting done with the routing for the summer school. We got that already done and we coincide that with preparing for the upcoming year routing. So it's a real tight timeframe because you're going straight from April, May, getting the routes prepared for summer school. And then soon as you're done with summer school, you jump right on for the upcoming year. And we start talking about routing 18, 20,000 students. We try to get it as quick as possible based off of the selections, school selection of the students. That dictates when we can even start our process. So it's kinda, once we can get that information, we start routing immediately.
That actually goes in with some of the questions that I had exactly. Cause, and I, something I was asked by a few members of the public was, does Miller do the same bidding on routes? And if so, when do they do that? Do they have a similar timeline to what we have or do they do theirs farther in advance?
Because it's a smaller school district and they don't have the type of turnover that we have in such a larger metropolitan area, they can do theirs as late as pretty much they want. Their drivers, their routes don't change as much. It's sort of, it's static. It doesn't move much. So pretty much the drivers pick the same routes from year to year based on the seniority. So it's like comparing apples to oranges as far as Miller is concerned.
If we were, say, if we, if we worked together, found a way to have routes done earlier, if we, again, this is a specific question that was brought to me. If we had route selection and route bidding earlier, would that negatively affect the drivers that do receive those unemployment benefits during the summer? Because...
Absolutely not.
Okay. And honestly, my other huge question that I think I had asked the most was about the student absences. And I apologize, I was late because we had a lot of student issues come up towards the end of the day today at the institution I work at. And I think I heard Ms. Scotty say that we are not counting those against the students. So I was very happy to hear that. I hope the public all took notice of that and that the media will officially report on that fact as well.
Okay. I think Mr. Vargas has a question and I know we've got parents who wanna get to stuff, too. So go ahead.
Thank you very much, President Scotty. You know, so this is along the same lines as Ms. Underwood. I just wanted to get some more clarity operational-wise. Do we have anything in our contract language with STA concerning the sort of drop-dead deadline in which we, we hear about capacity issues regarding buses? And I'll frame this under, a lot of people have come to me and obviously came here wanting accountability. And I think, I appreciate, you know, the level of accountability you're taking for not communicating, but we also manage a contract. It's our responsibility to ensure we are, we are overseeing the quality of what we're expecting and have our own procedures for managing that. And so I'm curious, do we, you know, what, do we have anything in our contract language in terms of a drop-dead deadline, understanding capacity issues? Does that exist?
When you're saying capacity issues, I wanna make sure I understand. We do, there are things in the contract that addresses if we go, we drop down so many routes, there's some additional charges with that. There's charges if there, it's a range, if you will. If you drop down so much, that affects the two-hour rate. If you go over and beyond so much, it affects the two-hour rate. So there are charges in there that addresses that.
I guess more what I'm asking, that's helpful, but more what I'm asking is, when do they have to tell us that they have shortages in terms of drivers? This isn't the routes. This is, is there any, anything in our, our management of STA that we are asking that question? Especially since this shortage isn't just a year shortage. It seems like we've been having this decline in talent, you know, for this specific role for years. Do we have anything in our procedures of managing this contract for assuring that we are, we are asking that question and then getting back a quality control answer for it?
There are liquidation-type damages for different, whether buses are late, late for so many timeframes, 15 minutes and going beyond. There are damages pieces in there to address those type of issues. The very specifics I can quote to you, but there are damages in the contract based off of that.
In terms of management, because this is the other question in reading some of the email correspondence, you know, there was an agenda, and I can't remember the exact date now. It was a little private, maybe it was 8:03, there was an agenda there. I didn't see meeting notes, so I was unclear on to what was directly communicated to you. When do you make a decision that I feel satisfied that we have the capacity we need? Because it sounds like we asked the question, "Do you have all the drivers you need?" And they were like, "I think we're good." I can't, I'm paraphrasing. "We feel confident with recruiting. I think we're gonna be okay." So what's your measure for controlling, like, okay, how do we ensure that that's actually, we have enough people on day one in terms of drivers or we have enough people that are actually about to be hired, not just recruiting? Because obviously, we know that takes a long time. This is about a week and a half before 8:15. So what do you do? I'd love to understand that a little bit more.
Again, we tell them what our expectations are in terms for the driver need. At a certain point in the year, usually at the mid to end of July, we give them that information. And then we get a understanding. As I said, we kinda talk continuously with them on where we stand. But the actual drop-dead timeframe we would know would be after they do their route selection and tell us officially how many they have then. But that still doesn't answer for how many will show up on the first day of work. So it's kinda, to get an official timeframe from or the official number, I have to rely on what number that's given to me at that time. And in most cases, it's after the route selection.
Okay. So I bring this up mostly because we have to learn from our mistakes. I appreciate the accountability that you've taken, STA. But I also wanna make sure that there is, you know, in the language that I'm reading in the emails, and we don't have meeting notes, I'm not seeing a definite, I know that we are confident we have enough bus drivers. And the answers we're receiving with STA do not comfort me if I was managing them. So I wanna make sure that we're also changing both, and this is also just for our entire department and for Superintendent Evans as well, how we manage and support you to be able to have this conversation and have the, know that we absolutely know what we're getting in terms of the number of bus drivers. Because I still don't have the confidence in the information that we have, that we've really pressure-tested and asked them that, which concerns me because we have such a short-term type turnaround, we can't just rely that it's gonna happen. Part of our job, I believe, is to, is to control for that and do everything we can to ask those questions since this is a reoccurring issue. The other question I have is for STA, and maybe it's for both of you. On eight, so you found that on 8:12. Is there a reason why you weren't, you didn't alert us on that Friday regarding the results from the bidding for the routes when you knew that we had a shortage? You know, what was the rationale for not alerting us on 8:12 versus 8:15?
I think, I think the team, the local team, started making phone calls and called all day on the 13th to find out who was returning or not. And the 14th was a Sunday and, I'm sorry, that Monday is when we reached out and said we have a shortage issue. I think, you know, in addition, you know, to what everyone's hearing relative to communication and a review of the process, no doubt, we're in a tight labor market and no doubt, I think we need to, you know, make sure we're running the most efficient routes. I thought you were going, you know, with respect to your question on capacity with vehicles. But our vehicle capacity is 77 passengers. By no means do we wanna put 77, you know, children on vehicles and I understand that. But, you know, we do have, we do have, you know, a responsibility, and I know, you know, Mr. Salas shares the, you know, shares the opinion. And that's why we work very diligently once we see who arrives at the, you know, the stop, you know, the first day of school and which routes can be consolidated and which efficiencies can be had. And then back to Mr. Wayne's point in terms of saving, you know, two or two and a half million. We have to drive toward that because the labor market is not getting any better any time soon.
Yeah, I know, I appreciate that. The operational, so I was more thinking about the capacity in terms of actual people, right, there are drivers. And I bring up the 8:12 more as versus 8:15 and the communication as a way of operationalizing. I think, one, we should know at the end of that bid day what you already know. I think, one, we should know at the end of that bid day what you already know. And then on the other side, that we should be asking for that information, especially since we know that there's such a tight turnaround. Because it puts us, I mean, I think that's more the operationalizing, getting more proactive and not being reactive. By the weekend, there's, you know, on a Friday, we probably could have done a lot more in terms of putting out some information, or at least preparing ourselves. And we should be having those conversations now. I know we're trying to think about how we get kids home right now, but we should also be thinking about how we're preparing for this for the next year, even right now, as we speak. But again, this is about public safety, this is about operationalizing, but ultimately, I'm asking these questions because I believe the public deserves to understand that culpability falls on everyone. We all take an equal amount of responsibility for what we play. I do appreciate STA has taken a level of culpability in this, and I do believe that that, that the buck falls with the service that you are providing to us, but I also believe the buck falls with how we manage more proactively the quality of the services that we are paying taxpayer money for. I think that this is what this is about. I appreciate the time, and thank you for answering the questions.
Thank you very much. Let's see, before I call on Mr. Wayne here for, I think, wrap-up question, I do want to share with the board that I have asked, and Mrs. Neelis Frash has been working on just reviewing the contract, so she'll get us more information later on that. Mr. Wayne?
I just want to point out to Mr. Vargas's point, the only key date in there is the preliminary data, preliminary route date, which is August first, and we delivered it on August fourth. Now, we can argue whether brains are preliminary routes or not, but the clear language of the agreement says preliminary routes by August first. So with that, I'm really, really disappointed that it took this meeting for the silent awkwardness of the difference between covering the route and being on time to be understood by the two people in charge of our transportation. It's that kind of breakdown of what I heard, and this is what Mr. Vargas kept trying to drill down, and the answer was, well, I hear that it's covered, and STA is saying it's covered, but it won't be on time, and therefore, we don't have to communicate because we don't really know whether it's covered or on time. That's, after four years in a contract, I would hope we had that language, important language, worked out. Next, I guess, thing I have is that we can't say we want the official data or the official communication to come from SBA, but then direct them to go find their kid if it's in a non-emergency to STA. Either we're gonna control the communication to the parents, or we're not. Because if my understanding is STA doesn't have information, the student information, as far as how to contact a parent if something were to happen, they would have to call OPS, and then OPS would have to call the parent. Why not just have all the communication go through OPS, every number come through OPS? If we're gonna be the official, in your words, Mr. Salas, the official communication over routes and everything else, then we need to be the official communication house in your department for any issues that arise with our transportation. I think it's just simpler for the parents, it needs to be one number. The last thing I guess I have, I know a couple of drivers who were hired by Lincoln Public School for a student to go down there over the summer. I got two questions. One, was OPS internal drivers, did we have a shortage at the beginning of the year?
Yeah.
We did, we also had a shortage?
Yes.
Was that communicated out?
And we were able to cover on time. We didn't have the same.
I see you used both words there, cover on time.
Because.
I appreciate that. I see, we're working on communication, I appreciate that. So, but my question is, did we hire any STA drivers? Because we offer benefits and they don't.
Correct.
Did, we did?
No, you're saying.
Did we, did we hire any STA drivers over the summer?
I would not have, know that specifically. I would have to yield to human resources and get that.
When you followed up with your callers, did any of them indicate that they were hired by OPS?
No, sir.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we're not causing some of the problems in this. I appreciate everybody coming out, but because we talked about this turnaround time and things like that, and it just popped in my head that we have $2.1 million to work with, why don't we, and I'm asking for, enough board members here to give nods, set aside some of that money to bring somebody in the logistics industry to come in and review how we audit, when we audit, and if there's a better way of doing that. And maybe we can use some of that $2.1 million to get that done, or maybe STA knows somebody that they can help out with, or maybe OPS does, maybe we can get a grant for it. But why don't we, why don't we do that? It seemed like we have a routing problem and a timeline problem. We're not the only school district in the country that does busing, but it seems like we're one that made the national news lately, so maybe we can learn from other school districts. So, I would propose that we use some of this savings to bring somebody in, a third party in, to come in and evaluate, find out where the breakdown is, and what improvements we can make, and a clear plan no later than December, so we can communicate to parents next year that we won't have this problem again.
So, so one thing I would say is, I'm not sure it's 2.1 million, so we need to work with Mrs. Kenoke on what the number really is, because I don't know exactly what her budget number was. I just want to make sure, I'm sure there is some savings, and I would agree with you that by consolidation, we always get savings, but I don't know how she budgets for that in a whole year when she knows we're gonna do consolidation, so.
That implies the problem. Why do we know we're gonna do consolidation based on eligible riders?
Because we know that some kids are, like mine, will start driving, and they're not gonna take the bus.
Madam President, we consolidate the majority of our routes, the first two months of school, based off of eligible riders, not actual riders. So if we know that ahead of time, and STA and OPS is working together at the table, then we should already have that consolidated ahead of time. And I would like to see a professional come in and tell us how we get that done.
I understand that what happened in this situation was the consolidation of some secondary routes together, which we've never done before. I think what typically happens in that two-month cycle is you find out kids don't need the bus anymore, and so there's not a need for a route. And I've had plenty of conversations.
Can we just ask them? They're here.
Well, they don't, we don't know to ask, right?
But you know it's based off of eligible riders, the first initial month versus actual riders. The question is, does the majority of our consolidation come from eligible riders or
The majority of our consolidation is based off of when the actual ridership kicks in, and we get that information from STA.
So why is it last year in October, we went from four hundred and fifty-seven by October, before actual ridership? Because I saw the emails that went across that it's based off of eligible riders. So you're saying today, that the emails that we got saying it's based off of eligible riders are incorrect, that it's based off of actual riders?
No, when I say eligible, we have, again, when we route, we route based off of the eligible riders. And then the students who actually ride the bus, we get that information from STA. And as those students, we find out that ridership, we continue to cancel the students off the route, which in turn decreases the number of students on bus, which decreases the number of buses that are used. And that never stops. It will go all the way to the end of the year.
That's not the question. The question is, the majority of our consolidations based off of eligible rider. I have emails that show that, Travis, we've been talking about this for three years.
I get that, but I want to make sure I'm, one moment.
Let me, let me kind of step in.
May I call, may I call Ms. Hanson up to the microphone, please? Ms. Hanson is the lead router who deals with the majority of it, so I want to make sure I'm giving you the accurate information, Mr. Wayne.
When we start, when we start routing for the beginning of the year, we route all eligible students. They all get transportation. As the routes start, parents will call into us cancelling transportation, schools will call and tell us that kids are driving, parents are bringing them, and then STA will send over information telling us which students do and do not ride. As that progresses, stops are dropped, the loads go low. Then we start looking at routes around there and say, we started out with forty on this one, we started out with forty on this one, we now have fifteen and fifteen. You can consolidate and drop a route. That goes on through the whole year, as people move, people cancel, it's an ongoing, ongoing process till the end of the year.
Not what I'm asking. And I'm, and I'm gonna get this question answered, if I have to go through the emails, we will. Are most of our routes, the first month of school, consolidated based off of eligible riders or actual ridership? STA, can you answer that, since you kind of recommend whether we?
Mr. Wayne, it's a two-phase process. Some routes can be consolidated based on eligibility, and after the eligibility, routes are consolidated, you can then consolidate based on ridership. The ridership aspect is done a little bit later than the eligibility.
So our initial routes in August, September, mid-September, are based off of eligible?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I think to, whoops, wrap it up, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Evans, and then, can you just ask your folks to raise their hand in the back if they're individuals that our parents can go see if there's, I'm just curious to know who they are. Not the parents, the STA folks, because we don't want everyone coming to you asking you questions. Okay, perfect. So if you all identified some folks back there, and I don't know that we have any tables set up, but if you would please, oh, the folks over from the district are going to vacate the table there, so if STA could move to that table, that would be awesome. And then we can have parents start lining up, but I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Madam President, and thanks to everyone that was here tonight and sharing a lot of information that I don't think everyone in the room has heard before. I've been maybe, maybe not fortunate, not the adjective, but I've been in meetings the last week and a half where I've been able to hear most of this already, so I clearly understand the work that we have in front of us, and it's pretty significant. We will not, cannot, it's unacceptable to, and I think you heard from everybody that's here tonight, allow this to happen again. And so, we're first gonna take care of getting this year back on track, and I think we're well on our way, and I want to thank everybody who's worked well, well on making progress. And the second phase is, what are we gonna do to make sure this doesn't happen next year? And so the ladies and gentlemen that are in front of you tonight, as well as a lot of other staff, have already started looking at things, and I guarantee you, we'll be working hard on that in the next four to five months. It's not a simple solution, but it's one we've got to come up with. As you've heard again, no one in this room says it's acceptable. I certainly don't think it's acceptable, and we'll be looking at every single option available. So I want the board to know that, I want the community to know that. We're all accountable, including me, that's for darn sure. And I've had a lot of folks share that with me lately, too. I'm lucky like that, folks are willing to share thoughts with me. But that's the truth. We're gonna work on this, and we're gonna figure it out, not only for this year, but for the future. It's unacceptable where we're at today, and we're gonna continue working on it. Thank you, Madam President.
And I guess just as a final thought, because we have parents here, and I know on behalf of the Student Assignment Plan Committee, if you're looking at information for next year, go to sap OPS.org, and you'll be able to put in, you can see it in five different languages, the information, but you'll also be able to put in your address, and it will tell you if you're eligible for transportation or if you're not. We have significant changes coming next year, and so I want to make sure, every opportunity we get, we communicate that information out to parents. So, with that, this special meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-six PM.